Yeah, it goes on and on. Must be my cord. Maybe it's.
You're alive.
I call the order, the December eleventh Westlake City School Regular Board Meeting. Roll call.
Here now.
Here.
Wazinski.
Here.
Panukin.
Here.
Kraft.
Here.
Stole. Is absent.
Everyone will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We always like to start our meetings with a reminder of our mission and vision statement. Westlake City School Mission Statement is we educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, and to contribute to society. And our vision statement is Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered, 21st century learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven, continuous improvement in tangible results. We have a full house tonight. It's wonderful seeing everyone here today. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And a discussion? Roll call.
I would like to note on the agenda that before the meeting, the printouts are missing a superintendent's item J, letter J, I believe, that has been added. The board has reviewed it. Kraft.
Yes.
Panukin.
Yes.
Wazinski.
Yes.
Here now.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we are going to go ahead and turn it over to the Westlake Educational Foundation and a report from Mary Essig.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to start off by first reiterating the mission of the Westlake Educational Foundation is to enhance the educational opportunities and experiences of Westlake City School students in the endeavor to educate. To support our mission, we have held three successful car raffles. We've kicked off our fourth one. Hopefully, everybody has seen that. The drawing is on February thirteenth, so get your tickets. Five for a hundred. To further achieve our mission, at the beginning of the 2021 school year, we awarded our first round of staff grants to teachers at the elementary school. In 2022, we awarded over $30,000 in grants. One grant was at the high school and one was at Lee Bernice Middle School. And I'm thrilled to be able to present our 2023 grant recipients tonight. We modified our grant application, which I had reported back in July, I think. We received nine grant applications, and of those nine, the foundation has decided to grant five of the requests. And so we have representatives from each of those grant requests here today, so I'm going to announce them each one by one. They already know, but they can respond to any questions, give you a little more information about what their grant is going to fund. So the first one I wanted to mention, oh, and before I start, the total of our five grant request is over $21,000. So we are very excited about that. The first one goes to Mr. Thomas Major at Westlake High School, and the so it's for $545, and it's to fund the educational dominion. You can explain what that is.
Thank you. So at least one of you is going to have to keep this a secret for someone coming up. So I, a few, a couple of years ago, I taught this really cool game. And I've been playing it for the last few years. I've been teaching students, and students love it, and it's turned into like the strategic board game class that I've been teaching over the summers. It gets way more kids than it should. And and I realized one day, as I was sitting there this past summer with some former students, that this would be one of the coolest English activities that we could possibly do. And so we, thank you, are going to get these awesome new expansions and during this stressed out AP testing week that the students always have, where we're told to do as little with them as possible. We're going to play some games. They're going to learn this game. They're going to they'll get a little annoyed because they'll have to study this game, and they like to play and not study. And then they're going to have to take one of the texts we've read this year and create their own expansion. So we're going to put the highest level of blooms, and it's going to be awesome. And I'm like crazy excited, and I've been told by lots of students to temper my expectations. But I'm very excited. Any questions?
We were just talking about you this past weekend, my grandson, who you gave him his very first detention, remember way back? And he ate.
Right after.
Yes, and when when you were hired, you related that story to me because I didn't know. So we saw him this past weekend, and I don't know why we started talking about it. We still laugh over it. He will remember it for eternity.
I, again, it's been 10 years. I still remember him. I mean, how do you forget a kid grabbing a detention? It's a great day. You always want, you always want to do that to students. I have never thought any of those.
Situation.
Thank you very much.
For you.
Appreciate it. Thank you guys. Thank you so much.
The next one is awarded to Shontae Costa at Westlake High School. $2,462 to fund building a better community through computer science.
Good evening. I want to say thank you. So basically, the goal is to always teach kids that computer science can be used anywhere and everywhere, not just on the laptops and, you know, in our hands and not just programming. So the goal here is for students in my next semester web design class is for them to not only build a website, but to also create a website that is actually helping somebody else, a website for a purpose. So the purpose is for them to create a piece of an artifact or a tool that can help someone with disabilities, which can be either physical or a learning disability through the use of a 3D printer.
Oh, any, any questions?
So is it funding for a 3D printer?
Yes. Okay, so the funding for the 3D printer and the tools, and I already have the curriculum, but it's to have them have actual prototypes. So that way, if they want to expand on those prototypes, then they can, you know, possibly take it to the next level, which for them to have like similar prototypes, and we'll all be working with Ms. McLean's students, and they'll be helping us with the, the physical disability aspects. And then as far as the learning disabilities, we'll figure that out. So I really don't want to put anyone out here, but you know, some students may have their own that they want to, they may think might help someone, especially, you know, with, you know, with ability to focus, ability to, you know, keep, stay on task and things of that nature. So.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next one, the next award is going to the team of teachers, Karen Kane and Judy Buffington at Westlake Elementary School. It's for $2,776 to fund crafting the future. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. $2,670 for everyone has a voice.
Thank you very much. And as it's kind of self-explanatory, everyone does have a voice. We feel very strongly about that. And so this is for two communication boards that will be outside on the playground in two separate areas, one that is within the fenced-in area and the other one. And this is for individuals who are nonverbal, for individuals who may, for whatever reason, have difficulty speaking at that time. They may have English as a second language. Gives everyone the opportunity to communicate while they're out there, rather be, I want to be done. I'm cold. I want to play on the swings. I want to go on the slide. It's my turn. You know, whatever those things are. And the icons that will be used are also the same icons that are in our curriculum for our extended standard students. So that curriculum uses a certain set of icons, and so we have mirrored that with the company so that we could use those exact same ones for obviously generalization as well. So we're really excited about it for all of our students. Any questions?
What was the genesis of the idea?
Well, because we use communication boards all the time in our, with our, many of our students. The problem with that is when they go outside, most of the times they don't take them, either A, because it's weather, or B, they set them down and then somebody steps on them, and we've now lost a very expensive piece of equipment. So how do we do this and solve this so that they're still really independent? They still have a voice out there. How do we do that? So we started looking into, and there are several companies actually out there that do it, but we wanted to make sure that we were with one that utilize the icons that we use.
That's great.
And they're right here in Westlake.
Wow.
So they won't be out all the time. You'll take them in.
No, they will be out all the time. Yeah, they're weatherproof, and they've been, they're like, it's a vinyl with a coating on it, so they are stationary outside. Then you can withstand any kind of, you know, weather. Yeah.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah, so they're not dynamic, right? So it's not going to move. Those icons are not going to move. It's a static board. As opposed to a dynamic one where different icons show and you can move pages. So this is a static board that's up there, but we'll be all the for all time, you know, for all the weather. So it's raining out or snowing out or whatever.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, very, very much.
The next one, the next grant was awarded to Sandra Laurenti at DIS. It's $2,776 to fund crafting the future, empowering artisans with Potter's Wheel Raspers.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight and for allowing me to get up and speak to you. The Potter's Wheel Program targets around 500 students in the fifth and the sixth grade building. So they're around 10 and 12 in the fifth and sixth grade. And at this stage, students transition to middle school, gaining independence and the ability to handle complex tasks. Fifth and sixth graders are naturally curious, seeking hands-on creative experiences. The diverse student body includes various cultural, social, and economic backgrounds, fostering inclusivity. Students have diverse interests, and pottery allows them to explore their artistic passions. Students range from beginners to those to those with some art experience. The pottery program complements academic growth with a hands-on approach. Pottery aids emotional expression, stress relief, and self-confidence, promotes collaboration through group projects and exhibitions. It also enhances skills, skills critical for middle school and success, involves parents and the school community through exhibitions, introduces arts, ceramics, and education as a potential career path. I actually have really been very passionate about ceramics, and I've always wanted a Potter's Wheel in the art room, but it's something that really never was available to me because it is very expensive. So when I learned about the grant opportunity, of course, that was one thing that I wanted to jump on right away. I teach all hand-building techniques, the coil, the slab, and the pinch. And when I mentioned to the kids that we actually were potentially going to get this grant, they were very, very excited. So they're super, super excited to get their hands on the Potter's Wheel and to start spinning some clay. So if any of you want to come and do that with us, that would be great. And thank you so very much.
Now, do you have a kiln in the building?
We do. We do. So we fire that every quarter. In the intermediate school, we transition every nine weeks with students. So each student in the building does get that opportunity to build with clay.
That's awesome. That is, that's wonderful. Yes.
So thank you so very much.
Okay, and the last one is also going to a team of teachers. And I have three names, but wasn't it more than three names on there, or was it just the three?
The occupational therapists.
Okay, so I have Cheryl Picktall, who's not able to be here tonight, Sue Pepplin, Brittany Hagman, and was there another person on there?
Tracy McGinty.
There was a lot of people. And that team of teachers at Westlake Elementary School is receiving $12,952 to fund supporting special needs, investing in sensory enrichment. We are super excited about this. Our students, the students that we work with have complex sensory needs. And we incorporate sensory diet into their, their schooling, help increase focus, to increase calmness. And we, we recognize that those sensory issues do affect so many different things throughout their day. We have access in our building to a group sensory room where there's a lot of gross motor things and opportunities for them to explore. Our classrooms have smaller sensory rooms, and they were, they're not equipped. So anything that we've tried to bring in, it's anything that we can find and scratch together. So this is enabling us now to create these spaces for our students to use in a proactive way, as well as in a reactive way if they need a calming space. So our, the funds will go to a variety of equipment that will address tactile, auditory, visual needs that will help increase their self-regulation skills, their ability to focus at school, and hopefully also decrease any behavior issues as that are related to those sensory issues.
We are so thankful for everything that we are receiving. Like Sue said, these sensory rooms are in our classrooms, which provides us the opportunity to send a student in right away. A lot of our students have issues with transitioning the building. There may also be another student in there having a hard time, which can escalate some of our students. So having the opportunity to have these materials right in our classroom is huge for us. So we're so excited.
Awesome. I could use one of those rooms myself. Have to make an appointment. I, Sue, going back to the pottery, because you're an artist. I've seen some of the beautiful things that you have made.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I do, do ceramics. Yes. So I'm excited. I'll be over.
Great. That's awesome. That really is.
You so much. This is just wonderful. We appreciate you. So those were the grants for this year, and when we leave, I'm just saying to the recipients, when we leave, we'd like you to meet outside. We're going to, in the hall, we're going to take a picture of where everybody leaves.
And before we conclude, I just want to say very excited with all that the foundation is doing. Very excited for all of the grant recipients. We wanted to take a brief moment. President Mary Essig mentioned that the mission of the Westlake Educational Foundation is to enhance educational opportunities and experiences of Westlake City School students in the endeavor to educate for excellence. I am very happy to work under you on the board. Today, we really want to recognize Foundation President Mary Essig for her years of leadership of the foundation. It is because of President Essig that the foundation exists in its current strong state. Your achievements exemplify the values we hold dear. Your commitment serves as an inspiration to us all. We wish to extend our gratitude for exceptional dedication and outstanding contribution.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm just going to say, over the weekend, I was having a parking lot chat with a former fellow PTA person who's still involved in PTA, we'll not say names. And I said, well, when you graduate out of PTA, you'll have to join the foundation. And she said, it looks like a lot of work. Trust me, she does more work than we've been doing on the foundation. And I just looked at her and I go, you know what? It's a lot of fun. It's great people that we're working with, and we're doing some great things. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Did you want to take the recipients out for a picture and?
Thank you all. Thank you for coming. Congratulations.
There, Jones.
That's okay. Any of you have less of an audience?
You say, do you want to go ahead and?
Always.
Introduce Jenny?
Sure, I could do that. Coming up to our podium is Jenny Petticourt, and she's been working in our, with our students with English, who are English language learners for a long period of time. And this year, this year, last year, transitioned into a position to
This is the second year.
Second year of helping us coordinate that. I know Jane, Amanda, and Paul work a lot with ELL. But having Jenny in to do that coordination, especially with the depth of knowledge she has, has been incredible. And we wanted to bring her in to be able to show some of the good work that the ELL department is doing and some information, because I think there could be a lot of people out there who do not realize how robust the program actually is and how important it is. So.
Yeah, thank you for that. So sorry, kidding my timer. Sorry. As Dr. Goggins mentioned, in the 2023 school year, prior to 2023 school year, administration identified a need for this role to meet the challenges of maintaining compliance with Title III requirements. During the previous years, with the district having, going through some growing pains with changing administration, changing in the annual assessment for how ESL happens, and of course, our pandemic and our growing ESL population. It just became a little bit more of a challenge. And so I was very, very grateful, and I know that I speak on behalf of my teammates in the department to have an opportunity to kind of spearhead the department and bring my expertise and, and see some things accomplished that we wanted. So the first slide, please. So I think that this role, of course, as we just mentioned, compliance was a big thing, but something that my teammates and I have really, really appreciated about getting this role was having someone to liaison between administration and the teachers for their communication in both ways, and then also to have some communication between our buildings. Because we've grown now to have almost 200 students in our district to speak a language other than English at home. And then further to that, when we can feel comfortable that we are meeting all of our compliance requirements, then we can be more robust, to borrow your word, in how we execute our programming and also to be more welcoming and further our communication with our parents and our families in that district. I will speak to compliance first, since that was one of the goals and also one of the places that I think I can show you the most tangible things that we have done now that we have this role as part of our department. So according to the Dear Colleague Letter that was issued by the Department of Education, there are really about, there are 10 exactly areas in which Title III compliance is expected. And the Dear Letter, Dear Colleague Letter gives us some guidance or encouragement about how to do those things. I highlighted four of these that I think have been very important and would like to show you the improvements and accomplishments that I think we've done in the last 14 months. So the next slide, we'll talk about how we are required to identify and assess students as they come into our district. We have a two-step identification process. Not just us, it's a federally mandated process. And one of those steps is that we have to screen students, and these screenings take about an hour each to administer. Since August 2022, we have screened 279 students here in this district. By having someone to spearhead the department and operate in that role, we've been able to optimize that screening process to make sure that our students are getting screened as quickly as possible. They're ready to go right into the most appropriate classroom for them before their first day of school. That is not something that we were able to accomplish always before this. As I mentioned, we had some growing pains, and one of those was that in the last five years or so, we've shifted to become a Google district. And as a result of that, we no longer use our Microsoft database to track all of these students, and we ended up with a lot of spreadsheets and that, and all that information was spread all over these different spreadsheets. And so one of the things that we've done is we've synthesized all those spreadsheets into one big document to help us track and, and keep records on all the students who are not only being served currently in our district, but students who need to be identified in the next two weeks, students who have recently exited our program, and also students who have not qualified for our student, for our program, lest they move to another district, and that district needs to know if we've screened them already. Then they might come back, and we need to find out if they need to be screened. So there's a lot of information, and I'm really proud that we've been able to get this all into one place. I am going to skip ahead to slide eight. Because I think monitoring and evaluating our students is another key piece of this that we have improved. One of the requirements from the federal government is that we continue to monitor our ESL students for two years after they have exited the program. And while we had always been keeping an eye on those students and putting them through keeping an eye to make sure they were passing appropriate assessments, graduating, things like that. We did not have a formal way to do that prior to the beginning of August 2022. We have 63 students who are in that boat currently, and so I am keeping track of those students, checking for their grades, their testing that they need to accomplish, whether they're, if they're in high school, on a good track to getting to their graduation requirements. Something we do also is to provide translation in other languages for our Ohio State tests. This is something that we are required to do. One of the things that we accomplished last year was to establish a really good, I think, partnership with a local translating company. Last year, we translated 47 different Ohio State tests. And we were able to recover $4,000 of the cost of that from ODE by having this role. It took a lot of work to, to obviously to schedule all those translators and such. Moving on to slide nine. Something else that we are required to do is to evaluate the effectiveness of our program on alternate fiscal years. So this will be coming up again for us next year. Looking at the effectiveness of our program and through communication with the, my teammates, we were able to reduce the number of students who were receiving consult support, which was really monitoring their grade periodically, communicating with their teachers to make sure their needs were being met. We were able to reduce that number from 66 students last year down to only 24 this year. And I think that's something that my team, I'm very, very proud of my teammates for extending themselves to rethink how we serve, rethink how we schedule, and to make that progress. We have initiated newcomer programs in grades two through eight, and we met over the summer to do curriculum mapping and identify resources that we wanted to use to do that.
Can you explain what a newcomer?
Yeah. Newcomer is kind of a, it's, it's maybe a term of art. It's not something that we'll find exactly in our our jargon. A newcomer in our district, we define as a student who has been in US schools for fewer than 360 school days, two years, and who has earned only ones or twos in reading, writing, listening, or speaking in our assessing, our screening assessment. It's a scale of five. So if you're only at a one or a two, you're at a very emerging level with your language. in reading, writing, listening, or speaking in our assessing, our screening assessment. It's a scale of five. So if you're only at a one or a two, you're at a very emerging level with your language. And then the last thing that we have done is to work towards having better meaningful communication with our parents and our community who have languages other than English in their home. We've introduced the Talking Points Program, which is a way for teachers and school staff members to text to parents. And if I send a text to a group of students who are perhaps seniors at the high school and three of them speak Arabic and two of them speak Ukrainian and five of them speak Spanish and there's also a Chinese speaker and a Korean speaker. All the parents get the message in their own language, although I've typed it in English. And if they want to respond, their response comes back to me in English, even though they are able to type back to me in their own language. We've added registration gateways, translations in Arabic, Spanish and Ukrainian, so that when parents come to register for our district, they can interact with our registration system in their own language. Again, they can put in the what they want to say in their language. It comes back to us in English for Katie Easton to proceed them. And then we also have made strides with our company that we've had this relationship with to translate all of our vital documentation, our notification letters, our requests for permission, parents' option to refuse. Some discipline letters at the high school have now been translated by a professional company into the main languages of our district. They're stored and organized in a central location now so that all of the staff members who need to use that communication can get to it.
So do you use a special app or for that?
No.
How's that done?
We send the documents out to a company who hires professional translators. They transcribe into the other languages, return it to us in Word form or Google Doc form so that we can manipulate it if we need to.
Okay. And how about the letters to the parents? Is that, that's done the same way then?
Yes, okay, yes.
And that's the local company that you're mentioning?
Um.
Or not? Just curious.
That company is not local. The company that translates for our OSTs is local. So we, we've satisfied all our requirements. I feel that we did a really good job of this, this year, getting that stuff back. Getting ready for our bi-annual review again next year. This has given us the ability to meet together more as a team to continue our best practices. We have throughout the department now embraced a forum for our independent language plans, similar to an IEP for other students. Like I said, we've developed the newcomer program. I talked to my teammates a little bit last week and one of the things that they wanted me to express was that they feel really, really grateful for this role for our department because they, they really, they appreciate the opportunity to maximize and optimize their time in the classroom because they know that someone who has lived the role for fifteen years is keeping an eye on all the things that need to be done and they can maybe develop, you know, save a little bit more brain power for what they want to do for their students. Looking forward now that we have satisfied these compliance issues and we feel that we have a good practice for doing so in the future, we all want to turn our eyes a little bit more to parent engagement, doing some grant writing, expanding our professional affiliations. I'm really proud to say that Westlake has, in the Northeast Ohio area, Westlake has always been considered a model of an excellent ESL department. And that is due to people in my department putting themselves out in leadership, local leadership programs, leadership positions. And so I think having this role in the department allows them to continue to do that and expand. Can I answer any questions for anybody?
At first, I want to say it's always good to see you and thank you at your department for all the things that you do. When you suggest and share some of these numbers and we share those with the broader community, it really is amazing and people are amazed at the work that you and your team do. I was thinking about the figure. It sounded like it was at this particular time or at a particular time there were sixty-six students under evaluation and forty-two of those had mastered. How, how do they feel when they reach that point?
Oh, our students who, yeah, our students who exit, it's always very exciting to, um, very, I mean, they're anxious, they're proud of themselves to get out of the program. We don't want to see them leave, but we we want to see them fly, you know. It's always, one of the things that's very, very gratifying about it is often they want to give back. One of our graduating seniors this last year came, she was my student when she arrived in fifth grade and I was still at DIS. She arrived as a, an absolutely silent newcomer for about six months. She didn't speak. And when she graduated as a senior last year, she took a number of brand-new students from Ukraine who were at Westlake Elementary and she kind of made it her business to go over there periodically and talk to them and make sure that they felt welcome here. And, and I think it was really, I was obviously very proud to see her do it. I think it was gratifying for her to give back and it just meant the world for our young fifth, I'm sorry, fourth and third and second graders at WES to see someone, not only to talk to somebody in their own language, but to see someone who had gone through what they are going through and know that there's, they're going to come out on the other end and be okay.
I was going to say, I, I hear about the experiences that the students are having when they, they come to the district, come to you and it, it sounds to me like there are models for students, Ukrainian students, students, say, from the Middle East that we've seen it before and, and we continue to get better and better because we have served similar students. Would you say that that's the case as well?
I think that's true.
Okay.
I think, um, yeah, they're all, they're all so different. We all come and, and yet we're all this, you know, the same. We all want the same thing. We want to, we want to come here and not have people think we're dumb because we can't talk. We want, I want, I want my teachers to know that back in my other country, I was a star soccer player or I was really good at math or whatever. And I, and it's, it's easy when someone does a communicate with you to think maybe they're not dumb. We, we, we all want to make friends and things like that. So there are a lot of commonalities that bind us all together. And then, as you said, there are a lot of things that make each student's experience unique. Some of us are coming, some of them are coming from trauma with war. Some have been separated with from their families because their parents come here first, trying to make their lives better and find a good job. Some of them are moving because their parents are moving professionally and they come with, with their whole family. And so that experience is different than the other one. So I'm not sure I answered your question.
It's very helpful for me to hear. No, thank you very much. Jenny, how many different languages are we serving? Do you have an idea?
It floats between twelve and fifteen. I think currently we're around thirteen or fourteen.
But you said that you have forty-seven transl, languages translated for the state test?
We translated forty-seven tests. So for example, the, the students cannot have their English Language Arts Test translated, but they can have their the same student might be taking math and science and American history and each of those tests would be translated.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Twelve to fifteen different languages. Well, thank you for all of your.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to share what we do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, turning on to super points report.
Okay, I'll extend a little bit from Jenny's presentation, just a little bit here. And, and I, I really, if, so in the last board meeting, we had social workers and counselors presenting. And this month, we are focusing on our English language learners and Jenny has spoken about how we've expanded her role to kind of be more of a coordinator. And I think it's important for not only the Board of Education, but for the community to know that, how we're utilizing our S R funding. And when we were coming out of, and a question I didn't ask Jenny, but you know, is the, when, I could tell you when we were doing our planning, when the S R funding came in and the S R funding was funding that was in response to the pandemic. And, and so when we received that funding, we really looked at different areas or groups of students who would be most vulnerable during a learning gap or something like that. And, and students who are coming in and just learning the English language is a group that we targeted and said would very likely be impacted. I'm assuming that there was a significant impact. Yes. And one of the things that we wanted to do, and when I had my office of Amanda and Paul, you know, doing other academic planning, really Jenny was one who, she's very humble, but in her field and with her colleagues who she mentioned is incredibly respected in what she does. And she has a a wealth of knowledge and experience in the area. And so we did turn to her and asked her to do some coordination because we really believed it was going to be important for, to have someone who, where that is always on the front burner. You know, and you don't have other directors who could be spread into other positions where Jenny is still remaining in a teacher role, but we, we free up really half of her day to do coordinative, coordinating type of role for us. And, and I think it's, it's important as we, we, we move forward and we understand what we have been utilizing our funds on and so that our, first of all, our community realizes that we really are focusing on areas that we truly believed would be impacted. I mentioned social workers as our students are coming back and you hear about some of the emotional concerns that could come out of it and, and how it's impacted families. And so our social workers are in place. We did add an additional counselor at the elementary school and you saw some of the work that they were doing and also the expansion of how we utilize Jenny here. And so I think it's just important that the community sees that we really did try and take a thoughtful approach to make sure that we, we utilize these to really get back to the classroom and back directly to the students. And the work that she's doing and her colleagues are doing is fantastic and, and really making a difference. So that was, I just wanted to emphasize that as I started my report, going into the Educational Foundation, just mentioning from the other speaker we had and you know, Joe Kraft is also a person who Mary referenced, but he's, he was instrumental in really bringing this foundation back to life and has been an enormous and continues to be enormous part of it. And it's really fun to be able to stand here at this point or sit here at this point. From when we were actually putting this back together and, and seeing the presentation and the awards that were going out and how those are going directly to the classrooms and doing exactly what we want to do. And that's enhance our classrooms as we strive towards educating for excellence. So those, I think these two presentations, I think really reflect a lot of what we're trying to do as a school district. And I appreciate Mary Essig and the rest of the, the foundation and the teachers who were here. And also Jenny, thank you for coming in and sharing some of that information with us. In my report, the only other, two other things that I want to mention is since our last board meeting, we did have our school play, It's a Wonderful Life. It was, I want to say wonderful. Yeah, it was really a, a, a fun show. And, and I thought the kids and staff did a great job in putting it together from set design to acting to, to everything that they did. It was really, really a fun show and, and very timely for the season we're in. And then, you know, finally, just from my report, we won't have a board meeting before the holidays. So everybody, happy holiday season and next board meeting, I think, is next year. So that's my report.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
Fantastic. Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no formal report tonight, so I will piggyback on Dr. Goggins there, just as it's our last scheduled meeting of the year. So I wish everyone, our staff and students to have a wonderful and safe break. And everyone as a whole, a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and just a joyous holiday season as we celebrate this time of year. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to hearing of the public. Our Board of Education meetings are public meetings. This means it is a meeting to publicly conduct our business in front of the public. There are times the public may address the board during the periods of the meeting designated for public participation. We, the Board of Education, do not engage in public debate and especially do not have a public discussion about individual student situations in this setting. Each person addressing the board shall give their name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time allotted is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had an opportunity to do so. Recognized speakers cannot transfer or delegate their speaking time to others. If a person wants to speak for longer than three minutes, at the end of the three-minute period, the speaker needs to stop. If the additional people wish to speak, they will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one else would like to speak, the original speaker may continue for an additional three-minute period. Period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present and voting. Is there anybody who would like to come up and speak? Okay, Seena, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
For the minutes, Bart?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi.
I was just, I saw, yeah.
I'm on for this now.
It's okay, no worries. All right, let's move on to recommendations.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight before you, I just have three recommendations. I'd like to just briefly go through them quickly and then you're welcome to ask any questions. The first one I have on tonight is for a, our permanent appropriations for this school year. You'll see on the detail, it's only adding, I think, three dollars and thirty-five cents, but it also is moving money around. Under the budget process, our department leaders and building administrators are able to move money under the permission of the superintendent, but ultimately when we change through those appropriations, it comes to the board for your consideration. Second piece, I have some then and nows. If you have questions, please let me know. And then the third one I have is authorizing a purchase from the school bus bids received from Ohio Schools Council. This year, we went specifically out looking for a transit-style van or a Ford Transit-style van. So kind of the old conversion vans or you, you legally can't have more than ten passengers. So if you think of the old twelve-passenger, thirteen-passenger vans, we're asking for authorization to purchase from the bid list for one van. Mr. House, who runs our transportation department, has brought it to Mr. Cosfar, Dr. Goggins, myself regarding switching from minivans that we currently operate to these transit-style vans. And it will allow us to transport more students on the vehicle and, and have a little more space in between them. Because sometimes in certain situations, we just need a little bit more room in between the students in the, in the vehicle. So this, we're hoping this will be a good solution. And if it is, we will be coming back to the board to purchase more of these next year. But this was for a purchase, one at this time, so that we can see how it works out and see if it fulfills our goals.
Can you use those for like some of the smaller sports teams where there's not a whole lot of kids instead of taking a big bus?
We, we can. So we are limited to a driver plus nine passengers. And your current language, it would still be a bus driver driving the vehicle. So you can only have nine other people in the, in the van. But yes, we absolutely.
I, I say that because I had a, a parent complain and this was several years ago, but the, the, the boy was on the tennis team and she, she said all of the other schools that were participating, they had those smaller vans. And Wes like had, I won't tell you what she called it, but it was a big yellow bus. And she thought it was, and I don't know the expense of, if it would be more to, to drive the bus as opposed to a van as far as gas or that, but she, she just brought this up to me and every time she sees me, she keeps bringing it up. So I don't know.
Is there an estimated cost?
So the bids came in with options selected. We're, we're doing a mid-rise roof on it. Instead of the standard roof or the high top, it would be mid, mid-roof there is roughly seventy-four thousand dollars. So they're not, you know, overly cheap, but buses right now. So they're not, you know, overly cheap, but uh buses right now, full-size buses are uh going for, I think they were one-twenty. And then uh we even looked at the options going, what if we went to a a smaller, they call them like the micro bird bus. Where it's uh still a yellow bus. It's considered thirty-passenger, but that's really just ten seats inside. So it'd be ten to twenty students, uh and those are coming in at nearly a hundred thousand dollars a piece now. The price of buses uh uh and vehicles in general have skyrocketed uh over the past five years.
Do you anticipate getting it the twenty-fourth?
Uh yes, it's a five to eight, five to eight monthly time. So we're hope, hopefully we'll have it for the start of the of next year.
Would you like to take these as uh five A to C?
Thank you, yes. Uh we can, if it's so pleased with the board, uh please combine each of them.
Someone like to make a motion for five A. Okay, any additional discussion? The property appraisal under the then announce, the Hotel Leisure um advisors, is that regarding um the Doubletree?
Well, that's regarding some uh properties that we have, uh where commercial properties have filed uh for evaluation decreases. And uh we do a a fight to maintain our property values. So uh this was actually a couple of different appraisals. Uh but uh it is for commercial property.
Thank you. Other discussion? Roll call.
Kraft?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Dr. Goggan.
Okay. Um I'd like to start off with, as always, Gibson donations. Read this separately. Uh so it's letter, uh number six, letter A. Um we'd like to thank Kevin and Beverly Acker donating a hundred dollars to Westside Connection at Westside High School. And also Catherine Hale uh for donating a brand-new three-D printer valued at two hundred and five dollars to Westlake Elementary School. The other um agenda items that I have. There are some sali- salary adjustments there based on uh educational increases uh or advancements. Some classified staff hires, some stipends regarding uh early literacy and dyslexia training. There are some athletics, one from fall uh with girls tennis, um uh boys' basketball, gymnastics hire. And also uh uh Coach Bowles for wrestling, um something for a stipend that's out there. With uh Mr. Woods to manage our website, which she does a fantastic job of, by the way. Um I think a classified sub as well as a a a contract, uh an outside contract for special education services. Um and then the one that was added was letter J, uh which was the course catalog. We did add that, um Paul did have that in uh the academic service um director's report for you. Um it just didn't get added to the agenda. Uh those are the items that I have for this evening. Uh as always, six A. Uh would be appropriate to have on its own and then six, six B through six J would be.
Perfect. Is there a motion for approving six A? Those, some moved.
Second.
Um as always, thank you to those who did the donations. Out of curiosity, where's the three-D printer going?
I know, do you know where that's going, Amanda? This is already, it is it going in our, oh, great.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's their motion to approve six B through six J.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
This um this contains to Mr. Woods and uh the website. You're right, he does do an awesome job. Along with everything else that he does. Um anything happening with Oos?
No, I I don't, they they were communicating and I just don't think it kept communicating. I don't know.
Just curious.
What happened with that?
Okay.
Thank you to the high school staff for the, and I know whenever they go in the update on the course catalog, it takes a considerable amount of time. And especially the new courses and uh going through all staff approval and whatnot, so thank you to everyone involved. I know students will be excited. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Kraft?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now we're go ahead to the second hearing of the public. Okay, seeing nobody moving forward, we're going to move on to board comments.
I I would echo Dr. Goggan uh about the play. Friday night and I can't think of, I think of who the lead's name is.
One was um Katie Jordan, right?
Yeah, Katie, no, but um.
And Kareem, um I can't remember his last name, but his mannerisms were so on.
He was.
Wasn't it?
Yes, he had to have seen the movie maybe ten, fifteen times, but he 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 portrayed um the character. The mannerisms.
It didn't seem like an impression.
It didn't.
And that's the great part about it, yeah.
I I thought he, I thought they all did exceptional jobs. Um but he he really nailed it. Haven't seen that that movie myself a number of times, so great job.
I also want to say that the all this week, there's all the band and choir and orchestra concerts going on. And my husband and I always go to the high school when I did Thursday seven. And it's just a great way to get in the uh the mood for for Christmas and it's relaxing and it's fun to see the kids. And so I, and it, do they have them next week too? I mean, you.
Oh, tonight, tonight.
And there's one every night this week. Uh the different schools. I wonder if they'll extend in the next week too? Okay.
I know third grade reading, that was a focus of the district, so thank you, thank you, thank you all um. For the results that we've seen and that Dr. Guy shared with us, excellent. And we're a five-star district in early literacy, so congratulations, your efforts.
We all had an opportunity to go down to O S V A, the House School Board Association Conference uh back in November. Um not asking for uh lengthy, but like if you had any overall thoughts or favorite session, I went. Um Mr. Wilson and I were actually both sitting in on the um. Um updating media centers and um sort of future-looking media centers presentation, which I thought was an interesting conversation. And through the changes that have happened with them, if anybody else has any other thoughts, it's always good um education throughout.
I had an interesting session on um uh Title IX. But this, the, you know, and uh what's going on with the athletics and uh. Have my notes at home.
I think all of us attended the Generations presentation and it was fascinating to hear that, especially from a um. Ballot issue point of view, how how is it approached, knowing our uh constituents well?
Especially since this is going to be our last one for the year, uh good luck to the high schoolers on their midterms coming up next week. And of course, always have a safe and uh relaxing winter break. Any other comments? Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to board items. Um Mr. Hopkins.
For a letter A, uh just to explain real quickly, the Board of Education appoints a uh president and vice president at the organizational meeting. Uh through the calendar year. So in order to start the new year, uh up until the organize, the next organizational meeting, I I would ask. At this time for nominations for President Pro Tem uh uh for and through uh the appointment of the next. President at the twenty twenty-four organizational meeting. Is there any nominations?
Yes, I nominate Liz.
Is there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will ask at this time, we uh go through a vote initially here. Um with only one nomination, it makes it easy. So we'll go through and uh this will be a vote. Uh for the uh position of President Pro Tem for the Board of Education. Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Kieran, you're President Pro Tem. Thank you.
Next up is the announcement date of the twenty twenty-four organizational meeting, uh January eighth, Monday, is what we're looking at. Is there anyone who has an issue with that date? Now, would that be at five P M. Or would that be at six?
January eighth.
It's a Monday, yeah, Monday night, six o'clock. I'm flying back from Florida that morning, so I hope there's no delay.
So six P M, start the organizational meeting and then we'll do the regular meeting right after.
Yeah, so typically we'll do uh a special meeting uh after the organizational meeting, specifically for the tax budget and any other business that might come for the board.
Mr. Lamb is January eighth, or? Okay, since you'll be joining us, okay.
Just to confirm, January eighth, six P M.
Correct, yes.
We will notice it as such. Thank you.
We'll have to have this swearing-in ceremony. All three of you, right?
Yes. Okay, moving on to the resolution to who adopt a report of an investigator. A complaint was filed with the board regarding board policy fifty-five seventeen dot zero one. The board hired an independent investigator. The independent investigator has completed their investigation and the board is voting on a resolution to accept the report from the independent investigator. Anyone like to make a motion for nine C?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for, to discuss the appointment and employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation. Of an employee or official in preparing for, conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees and matters required to be kept confidential by federal law. Or rules or state statutes.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Return into executive session at seven oh two P M. Kraft?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
You are in executive session.
And no, this will be uh conducted after we return to executive session.